I'm recording this locally for people to watch, that was requested. So, welcome, welcome all, one and all. We're gonna be looking at some of Silman's Reassess Your Chess and then also maybe endings, endgames later on, because we had some stuff about Silman's Endgame course. First things first, let's go down the line and just say like who you are, sort of what's your like chess experience? And have you looked at this book before? So Arkon, let's start with you. Arkon?
Yep, okay, here I am, sorry, I'm still learning Discord.
No, you're good.
So, so I am about 1900s, 2000 classical on Lee Chess. I have not looked at the book yet because I ordered it from Amazon and it's not getting delivered for another six hours.
Great.
I've been studying off and on for the last couple of years, but I've been playing for about 20.
Wow, cool, cool, cool. Determination?
Yeah, I'm Determination, I'm like a 2350 Lee Chess classical player. I've been playing chess for like 15-ish years and just started playing seriously, I guess closer to 10, but yeah.
Cool. Doberman?
Yeah, I'm about 1800 Lee Chess. And I've been playing over the board since July last year. Starting to take it seriously. Before that, I just played casually online with very minimal study and sort of trying to, trying to hit that expert mark in the next couple of years and I got the reassess, I've, I've had it for years, I've opened it and that's about it. I have looked at Silman's Endgame, I got about through class C stuff or D. I think I got through D and then C, the material just got gigantic and my attention moved to something else.
Cool, cool, cool. I'm Quirkt, I, I play, I play over the board quite a bit, I'm, I'm lucky enough to find myself in New York City where, so I can play at the Marshall. I'm like 20, between 2000 and 2100 light chess. Yeah, I've been playing seriously for about, I've been playing over the board for about a year. I've gone through this book before and I've, I've prepared some stuff in studies, hopefully it's useful. Just a quick note, I didn't like copy everything directly from the book because I think most of us have the book and if you wanted to literally just look at the book, you could do that. So I also added some stuff from my own games that I thought were sort of representative of the ideas and you'll, you'll see what I mean when we get into the studies. Alright, something unique?
Okay, I'm something unique. I learned how to play chess about nine years ago and I really only started playing on light chess like a month ago? So, yeah, that.
Cool. Something pretentious?
Hey, so I started playing chess first when I was a kid, so a while ago and then only really got into again sort of four years ago. I'm about 2000 on Lee Chess. Yeah, I've been through about half the book previously, but not for a while, so this should be on fresh eyes basically.
Awesome. So, first things first, for those of us who have, have looked at the book or have not looked at the book or any of that, the whole book is about this idea of imbalances and that there are imbalances in the position. So it's very important to first understand what on earth is an imbalance? Anyone can take it. What's an imbalance? What does that mean?
Ooh, I got it.
You got it. Tell me Determination.
Things that are different between my position and your position.
Thanks Determination, you're so right. So imbalances are just differences between the positions. And the first thing we're gonna do is look at the different types of differences you can have between the positions. So I posted a study in the general text channel and we're gonna start off right on chapter one. So let's all go to chapter one of this light chess study. Let's see, we got six of us here and there's six in the channel, beautiful. So, chapter one, this is taken from Bellows Norris, my name is Sam Bellows by the way. So I was playing white here and there's a very clear imbalance in this position. What's the obvious imbalance in this position?
Knight versus bishop.
Knight versus bishop. So different minor piece is a very, very clear imbalance. And in this case, I'm interested, let's take, let's take a poll. If you think the knight is the better piece, type Y in general. If you think the bishop is the better piece, type N in general.
Why didn't you just do B and N?
Because I'm, because I'm an idiot, I don't know. So we are so evenly split, interesting. I'm gonna pick a, what should we call it, a representative from each group. I've heard from Determination, so something unique, why is the knight the better piece in this position?
Wait, why was knight? I thought why was bishop?
Why was, okay, something unique, why is the bishop the better piece in this position?
Um, because I feel like it's easier to maneuver it than to be able to get it across the board to help support your pawns.
Cool. And I guess that means only Determination liked the knight. Determination, why is the knight the better piece?
Whoa, hold on, hold on.
Doberman, oh.
I like the knight too.
Uh, I apologize. My instructions were so unclear that we, we've ca, I've caused confusion. Doberman, tell me why is the knight a better piece?
Actually, I don't know that it is, but the problem I see with the bishop is it, it can't control the queen and square for white's d pawn. Whereas that knight can hit different colors.
Cool. So I think, in my opinion, and I think the end, as the endgame played out showed, the bishop is a very bad piece. And I think the, the reason for that is the d5 pawn is on white. And that makes the bishop's life very, very difficult. So what, what happened in the game is the king marched over to d6 and then the knight went around doing whatever the fuck it wanted and I couldn't do anything and I lost this game as white. So I think this is a classic bad bishop versus good knight. And as, as we see, one of the major weaknesses of the bishop is that it can't, it can only control one color complex of skates, but we'll, we'll get into that later. That was my opinion. Yeah, Determination, you wanna add?
Clarity, clarity for the audience, objectively, this is a draw, yeah?
Probably. But I don't think it's, I don't think it's easy for white to play.
Okay.
And I think it's probably objectively a draw, but it's not, not easy to play at all. Good, that's bishop versus knight. Let's go to chapter two. Chapter two, this was another position I encountered. And what's the major imbalance in this position?
Pawn structure.
Structure. Who has a better structure? Black. Black has a clearly better structure. Doubled isolated e pawns, that's no bueno. So these, these e pawns are super, super weak and that means black is better in this position. That's a big imbalance. Structure. Any questions on this chapter, chapter two?
Nope.
Great. Chapter three. So this was an interesting position I got. Right now, there's, I would say there's, there's quite a few imbalances. We've already seen one, we've got a bishop versus a knight, that's one imbalance. Secondly, this is our first material imbalance, black is up a pawn. So should white be worried? Black is up a pawn after all.
Not for long.
Why not for long?
That e7 pawn is a nightmare.
Exactly. So in addition to pawn structure, we also need to consider past pawns and how strong they are. So in this case, there's a really strong past pawn on e7 and that is an imbalance in the position. Black has to deal with this past pawn. However, the, the position is drawn objectively, but the, the e7 pawn compensates for the, for the having less material. So white is not worse despite being down material.
Hold on. This is drawn? Is this white or is it black to move, yeah?
It's black to move and he's gonna play rook h8 check.
Okay, and rook h2, takes, takes, king h2.
Black doesn't have to take there. After rook h2, black will play rook h5. Rook on g to h5.
I'm just thinking like you can very easily control the e pawn if we just take on h2 and then play rook e5 and black is up two pawns?
On rook e5. Give me a second. So, sorry, rook h8, rook h2, takes, takes, you wanna play rook e5 there?
Yeah.
I think, no, that doesn't work. I was gonna play rook e4, but I, you know, I would definitely wanna hang a rook there.
The knight on f6 is just so good, can't play rook g4, can't play rook e4.
Threatening the fork on e2.
That's interesting. I'm not sure to be honest.
Strong pass pawn? Here, I think black can control it and as a result, we see the opposite of the imbalance where up on too far away, we can't support, ends up being
You know what? I know what's going on. This position is, is set up slightly incorrect. In the game, my bishop was on b5.
Okay.
Which makes a lot of difference. So I, I set up the position a little bit wrong in the, in the piece editor. You're absolutely correct. If this were the position, black might be winning. But with the bishop on b5, it controls the queening square and that is, is a big difference.
Yeah.
You're absolutely right Determination. Good, so in addition to considering fractured structure like backwards pawns, isolated pawns, all that, we have to consider past pawns in positions. Chapter four. There's a lot going on in this position. I think there's one main imbalance.
Space.
Space. This is absolutely, absolutely a position to, to deal with space. White has more space and white's gonna try and sort of keep constricting black and limiting his active possibilities. And black is gonna try to, to break out somehow, maybe with b5, maybe with f5. But black has to organize some counterplay because white has all the space. And this is really typical of a lot of openings. You get this in Kings Indians, in Benoni's, where black says, "I'm gonna accept having less space, but I'm gonna get something in return." I don't know, does anyone else have an example of an opening where black accepts less space for something in return?
Hedgehog systems in the Sicilian?
French.
Yeah, hedgehog and French, absolutely, both of those. I'm trying to think if there's anything else. Most, most Sicilians, really. Well, not all Sicilians, but like, I'm, I'm thinking of like a Morosi.
Moroxi.
Yeah. That's another thing where black says, "Okay, white, take your space, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna break it down afterwards." Something unique, don't, don't worry about it, we're just sort of, we're just sort of blazing through all the different types of imbalances that you can have and then later on, we're gonna, we're gonna like break down like how to use that, how to effectively use that information.
I'm gonna jump in for a sec. There's a guy in the chess study on, on the chess study group on Slack who's trying to get in and can't get in because the link expired.
Uh, yes, let's.
I've just added a new one, that's fine.
You did?
Yeah.
Great. So that's, space is a big imbalance that we have to consider. Let's go to chapter five. This is obvious. What's the imbalance here?
Black's a knight up.
Material, we're up a piece. Amazing. Yeah, question? No?
No.
Great, yeah. If you're up a piece and white has no compensation, you're winning, congratulations. So material is a huge imbalance. You have to keep track of your material. If you're down material, you need to have something in return. Some other imbalance. But I'd like to point out, material, I feel like, especially at low, lower level chess, material is often, this is considered like the only imbalance, like that would lose a pawn, therefore it can't be played, it's not a legal move. But we have to consider when we give up material, if we get more in other imbalances in return, then that's worth it. So material's not the only imbalance we can consider in a position. Great, chapter six. What's the main imbalance in this chapter, chapter number six?
Pawn structure?
So there's a, there's an interesting structure going on here, right? There's definitely sort of an odd structure for both sides, I would say. But I think there's, there's something more problematic and more pressing going on in the position.
The d file.
The d file, look at that. Black's gonna murder white. Black has three heavy pieces on the d file, it's the only open file, that's gonna be a disaster for white. So in this position, black has control of the d file, it's the only open file, black is winning. And so if you have control of the only open file and nothing else is going on in the position, that's a big imbalance. And in this case, it leads to black being basically winning in this position. Good, next up, chapter seven. This is an interesting one, this is a bit of a complex position. Someone tell me something that's going on, some imbalance.
Knight versus bishop.
There's, there's definitely a knight versus bishop, white has two knights, black has two bishops. King position, that's an interesting one, right? White is uncastled. What else?
Black's on an outpost with his knight and white isn't.
That's a really important one. Black's e4 knight is on an outpost. And what that means is black's e4 knight can never, ever, ever be attacked by a white pawn. However, white's knight on e5 looks really good, but black, if black ever feels like, okay, that knight has to go, he can just play f6 and the knight has to go. So one thing we'll learn when we study knights is knights love outpost squares. So this knight loves being on e4, it's a monstrous piece. Whereas the white knight wants to stay on e5, but maybe it can't, maybe it has to go to f6. So this was, I, I used this position to demonstrate outpost squares and control of outpost squares. But what everyone else said about knight versus bishop and king position, those are also very valid imbalances in the position. But I, I just wanted to use this to demonstrate the difference in outpost squares. Can everyone see the circles I draw?
Yep.
Great. So yeah, the blue circle, it's not an outpost. Green circle, that's an outpost. So black has the better deal here. Good, chapter eight. I, I put this one in, in for Seb. Unfortunately, Seb's not here. So this is an opening called the Danish Gambit. And white has given up two pawns. So white has given away a material imbalance. What did he get in return?
Faster development than black.
Exactly. So having
Open lines.
Having the lead in development and open lines, opening lines is an imbalance. In this case, white is arguing that my lead in development is worth two pawns. At least two pawns, maybe it's worth more. But my lead in development is worth two pawns. Does anyone know the most common defense for black in this position?
We can see the moves.
You can see the moves. So
I can't.
You can't see the moves? Well, the most common defense in this position is d5. And the reason black does this is he says, "I agree with you, white. I agree that your lead in development is worth two pawns. So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna give some of the material back to speed up my own development." And that's a common tactic when you're facing a gambit, is you say, "This is too dangerous. I'm gonna give you some material back in order to solve some of my problems." In this case, black is saying, "Your material, or my material imbalance is worth less than your development imbalance. And I need to get some development, even if it means getting rid of my material imbalance." Does anyone know the full line here? I'm interested.
Bishop takes d5, knight f6, bishop takes f7, check, king takes f7, queen takes d8, bishop b4, check. Gets the queen back and queen d2, yeah.
Very good. So it's a very tactical line. If you don't know this line against the Danes, you're probably not gonna play it. But it's been worked out, this is roughly equal. That's totally not related to Reassess Your Chess, just fun chess trivia. Danish Gambit, now you know. Chapter nine. So this is, this was a really interesting game I played. So my first question, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask that we take, say, 15 seconds by ourselves. Is black threatening anything? Take 15 seconds by yourself. Alright, does black have a threat?
Yeah, I think so, c6.
C6, what's, what's the threat behind c6?
If bishop takes, then the c4 pawn falls and the d5 pawn gets really weak and hard to defend.
So c6, can I play d takes c6?
Can you put it on the board?
It's white to move in this position, so no. But on c6, could I put, d c? Doesn't, sorry, what?
Then doesn't d5 work because the bishop will be hanging if he takes?
It's possible. I think black has a more direct threat.
Knight takes d5?
Knight takes d5 is a threat.
Right.
And this, I think this is just a, a better version of what you were trying to do.
Agreed.
We're trying to exploit this bishop's position, it's a little bit awkwardly placed. So we know black's threat. Let's take 15 seconds and come up with what you would play for white. Alright, if everyone could type their move in general, I wanna see our moves in general. We have a variety of queen moves, I like it. The full menagerie of queen moves. So I've got a bunch of queen moves, but I did see the correct move mentioned and this is what I played in the game, it's a very good move, f4. I led you astray because I, I pointed out black's threat and that's something we have to notice. But this shows one of the most important imbalances in chess and that is the initiative. Or as Silman likes to call it, pushing your own agenda. So if you're constantly reacting to your opponent's threats, that's not good. So even if your opponent is threatening something, you have to look and see if you can create a counter threat or a stronger threat. And in this position, f4 is very, very strong. The idea is, I'm activating all my heavy pieces. My rook's gonna come to f4, my queen's gonna come to e6 with a check and suddenly I'm gonna get very, very active in this position. So this is really important. We have to look for active moves even when our opponents have threats. Does anyone wanna play a continuation after f4 to see just the, the powerfulness, the powerfulness? The power of this move? We can do it, we can play a, a quick continuation here. What would you like to play for black in this position?
E takes?
E takes, great. What should we play as white?
Oh, you see the check.
Do we wanna play the check or do we wanna play rook f4? We have to consider both. This is getting a little tactical and a little sharp, right?
Yeah, if we play the check first, black has time to play like queen e5 on the end or something.
Rook f4 is, is a better move. In the game, I played queen e6 check, I sort of, I took the, I took the approach, I don't know who said that, but it was sort of like, obviously the check. It made a lot of sense to me. But the thing about rook f4, which I didn't realize and it's really powerful, is the queen stays connected to the g3 pawn, which gives us the threat of h4. And black's position really starts to fall apart here. So queen e6 is a good move, but rook f4 gives us this extra threat of h4 later on, which is very, very strong. And as you see, white suddenly has all the activity. If you don't play f4, if you play something like queen e2, black is calling all the shots. Black can do what he wants. Maybe black plays c6 now, that, that move that was mentioned earlier. So actually, no, that doesn't work anymore because c4 got protected. But still, you get the point. And now, black can maybe just come over here or something, I don't know. But with f4, white's pieces spring to life and we, we push our own agenda. Also, I'd like to point out, does anyone know what Yasser Serrawan's definition of the initiative is? I like this. Yasser Serrawan defines the initiative as "the ability to create threats." So here, after f4, white has all the ability to create threats. Black is not creating any threats anymore, white's the one creating threats. And when you're creating threats, you're also creating opportunities for the opponent to fuck up and that's what you want. Capisce?
Capisce, yeah.
That's the initiative. This is the last imbalance, I think, that I wanna go over and it's king safety. Anyone who plays the French should know this idea. And that's rook takes f3. Oftentimes, black will give the exchange on f3 and what does black get in return? He gets a really, really sad white king. So it's okay to give some material if you're gonna mate the opponent's king. Because then you win and it doesn't matter how much material you have. So this is the last imbalance to consider, which is king safety. Now, I know that's a lot. That was a lot of imbalances, that was like 10 or 11 different imbalances. You had a good example of like sacking material to expose the opponent's king?
I think I sacked a bishop and a knight for mate.
Yeah. And it, and you didn't, you weren't like, "Oh no, I'm down material," you were like, "Oh, I win." So it doesn't matter how much material you give up if you mate him. So king safety
Yeah, exactly.
Even though it's like the last imbalance we went over, it's arguably the most important imbalance in the game. If you're getting mated, nothing else matters, you're getting mated. So those are all the imbalances. Oh, this is just, chapter 11 is just one more example of this. In major piece endings, king safety is arguably the most important facet of the position. So here, black is actually winning in this ending just because white's king is so unsafe. This is a winning ending for black. So just so you know, fun fact, major piece endings, it's all about king safety and past pawns, but mostly king safety.
In this position, just a mate in one if it's black to move?
It's white to move.
Oh, okay.
It would be mate in one, yes. But that's, that's something white's gotta deal with, right? So, exactly, white has some problems to deal with and that's why king safety is important in major piece endings. So I know this is a lot to deal with, but I, I do like something that, that my coach says in that when, when we evaluate positions, instead of going through like all 10 imbalances, this is what I look for. The first thing I look at is king safety, because as I was saying, if you're getting mated, nothing else matters. So king safety is the number one imbalance or thing to analyze a position by. The second thing I look at is piece activity. And that can, that can consist of things like knight versus bishop, control of a file. What were some other piece activity things that we, that we looked at? Oh, outpost squares for knights, those are all things to deal with piece activity. The third and only third thing I look at is material. Note that material is often like the first thing that, that amateur players will look at. Not that I'm not an amateur, I'm totally an amateur, but, um, material is less important than a lot of people think. It's the third thing you should be looking at. And last but not least is pawn structure. Doesn't matter if you have tripled isolated pawns if you're up a knight. Um, so, so pawn structure is really the, the least important thing, but it's still important. If all else is equal, pawn structure will decide the game. Very good. Oh, that's right. Let's go on to chapter twelve. So chapter twelve, um, I wanna give an example here. Uh, this is an example of the idea of statics versus dynamics. Someone told me, what is, what does it mean, what does statics versus dynamics mean, per se?
I got this. So a static advantage is one that's going to last you for a while, generally like a material advantage, so you're up a knight. You're gonna stay up a knight unless something changes. A dynamic advantage is often like a positional thing where it's like, "I'm better developed than my opponent." He's gonna catch up eventually, but right now I'm better developed, so if I don't use that advantage now, I lose it because he'll catch up with me.
Very good. So static advantages are advantages that you will have forever, and they will never change, uh, unless something crazy happens. So, um, uh, Arkon used the example of being up a knight, and that's true, that's a static advantage. I think more common static advantages are either have to do with pawn structure or with space. Uh, and we see this in so many openings, uh, things like the King's Indian. White claims a static advantage, he controls the center, and it's up to Black to make something happen. If Black doesn't make something happen, White's just gonna win, because he has this static advantage. So in chapter twelve, uh, this is a variation I play, it's called the, the f3 Nimzo-Indian. And if, as we see in this variation, White has a huge static advantage, he has a big center and a ton of space. So what does Black do? He creates dynamic play. He strikes at the center, he tries to make something happen, and the most principled variation is for White to just claim the entire center. And basically, if Black doesn't make something happen, White's gonna win. White is, has a static advantage, he doesn't have to do anything. Black has to make something happen, or else White is winning. Does anyone else have an example of openings where one side gains a static advantage and the other side has dynamic, uh, play?
Benoni.
Benoni, exactly. Uh, Benoni, Black is aiming for dynamic play, White has a static advantage. Uh, I think, to some extent, the, the Grunfeld is, is the same. Uh, the Grunfeld, the White, White player takes a big static advantage and the Black's gonna break it down with like c5 or, you know, whatever. I hate the Grunfeld. I hate playing against it. Uh, I gave another example here, uh, in chapter thirteen. The French Tarrasche. Uh, the closed variation. Black takes, uh, Black has a static disadvantage here. Let me ask you, why is Black statically worse in this position?
Has a weak pawn on e6.
Yeah, this, this is, uh, this backwards pawn on e6 is a, is a big, big weakness, which means White is statically better. White, all else being equal, if White can just consolidate the position, develop all his pieces, White is gonna win this game. Maybe not win, but White is gonna have all the fun, because the e6 pawn is weak and because the e6 pawn is so weak, that's a nice little outpost for a white knight to hop in on. So, uh, the main variations of this, uh, of this line involve Black drumming up play. Black's gotta make something happen. So one thing that's really important when you're, when you're playing is to figure out, are you statically better or are you statically worse? If you're statically better, you just sort of wanna like sit around and make sure your opponent doesn't do anything. If you're statically worse, well, you gotta figure out something to do for yourself, or else you're gonna be sad and you're gonna lose. And you're gonna be like, "Why did I lose?" Well, you were statically worse and you didn't do anything, and then you're sad. Alright, uh, we're, we're heading into our first, like, real position here, uh, one that's not focused on a single imbalance. So let's go to chapter fourteen, and, uh, let's take, let's all take a minute and sort of figure out what's going on in this position. Let's find some imbalances here.
White has more space on the queen side.
So White has queen side space, that's one imbalance. Who else has gotten imbalance?
I would say White has a less safe king, because the Black pieces can come over there.
Yeah, I agree with that. Um, Black's king, White's pieces are all sort of down here on the queen side, but you know, these are point, well, that's not exactly how that bishop moves. Um, but maybe this could open up, that's a bishop, that's a rook, that's a queen, here's a knight. So White's king is probably a little bit less safe, I agree with that. What else?
The big thing I see is that Black has a lot more activity with his pieces, and this advanced knight on e4 is, uh, is a great piece too.
So good. Um, we see that Black has a great knight, what, uh, what else makes you say that Black has more active pieces?
He's got this dark square bishop, that's got this great diagonal, and White's, uh, dark square bishop is, is closed in by his own pawns. Black also has this rook on, on e6 that's prepared to swing to the king side, where it looks like his attack's gonna happen.
So, uh, good. White, uh, or Black has, has really active pieces, right? Uh, what else? There's, I think there's, there's something important that we haven't mentioned in this position.
The, uh, the backwards pawn on c7?
Yeah, this guy's, this guy's no good, right? And I think this is important to evaluate when you have a backwards pawn. Because this pawn is backwards, what else is a problem for Black?
C6 square.
The c6 square, and what else? You're absolutely right. If the c7 pawn is stuck on c7, what other pawn is gonna be a problem?
D5.
D5, because this pawn cannot come up and protect the d5 pawn. So the d5 pawn is almost an isolated pawn. So what we're seeing here is that Black has serious structural problems, but he also has active pieces. Hmm, what does that sound like that we were talking about? This is statics versus dynamics, right? White is statically better and Black is gonna make something happen. So it's White to play, uh, and I want everyone to come up with not just a move, but a plan associated with that move. So we're gonna take, uh, thirty seconds on our own, uh, I don't wanna hear anything for the next thirty seconds, and I want us to come up with a move and a plan associated with that move. And if we're ready, we can start typing our moves into general. So I, I see a lot of great moves and a lot of great plans. What's the most important thing that we do when we have a statically better position?
Eliminate counterplay?
We wanna make sure our opponent doesn't do anything. So, uh, a lot of our moves were designed at trying to do something as White. But I think it's more important to make sure Black doesn't do anything. So these ideas of like rook c1, queen b3, they're all sensible ideas. However, we can play those whenever. We have all the time in the world. What we do have to worry about is maybe Black's gonna come mate us, and we don't want that. So I like this idea of bishop a3, and the reason is, this is a strong piece, it's attacking the kingside. Let's get rid of him. And lucky for us, that bishop can't, can't avoid being traded. If you look, that bishop cannot move anywhere to avoid being traded. So we are going to trade the dark square bishops, there's nothing Black can do about it. We're eliminating his counterplay. So, uh, Black proceeded with rook c8. Uh, we had a plan, what was our plan?
Deal with the weak pawns.
We wanna deal with the weak pawns, but why did we put our bishop on a3?
Trade.
To trade, so we're gonna trade. Now, Black made an interesting choice. He played c takes d6, why did Black do that?
He gets the c file out.
Yeah, Black is already structurally worse, right? So it doesn't matter if his structure becomes even worse. That's not the point, the point is he has to make something happen. So Black has, uh, damaged his structure even more, but he's trying to, to strum up some trouble. So, uh, let's take another fifteen seconds, come up with another move in this position for White. Very good, we all get it. We're statically better. We're not gonna let Black do anything. We're statically better, we're, eh, we're statically better, Black doesn't get to do anything. Alright. Black plays knight d f6. I really liked Topolov's next move. Uh, let's take fifteen seconds, find another move for White here.
Least active piece.
Knight f4. What else?
Finish development with the queen move.
So, uh, queen, or queen move makes a lot of sense, knight f4 makes a lot of sense, but, uh, Black put his knight on f6 for a reason. Topolov plays h3. I'll play knight f4 later, I'll play queen b3 later, I'm not gonna let Black do anything. Black never gets to create any sort of active play, and I think this is a really instructive game from Topolov. He just says, "You're not gonna do anything. I'm winning statically. I just have to wait and make sure Black doesn't do anything." So h3 is a really strong move from Topolov here, just saying, "Black, you don't get to do anything at all." Uh, and this is sort of, uh, uh, sorry, what am I saying? This is, this is sort of where the, the instructiveness of the game is, because Topolov eventually went on to do some crazy stuff. I think Black played like h6? Something like that, let me see. No, he played rookie seven, that's right. Um, so Topolov played rookie seven, then we got this queen b3 idea, Topolov traded all the rooks down the c file, uh, and he went on to win against these doubled isolated d pawns. So a really instructive game from, from Topolov, he just realized, "I'm statically better, I'm gonna trade off Black's good pieces, I'm gonna limit his pieces, and then I'm gonna trade all the rooks and play against these terrible, terrible pawns, because I'm statically better." And Black never got to do anything. A great game from Topolov. If you want to look, uh, chapter fifteen has the full game continuation. Of course, it is Topolov, so at some point he did decide to sacrifice a knight. Um, but, you know, he didn't have to. He really didn't have to. That was just Topolov being Topolov. So, uh, you can look over chapter fifteen at your leisure, that has the full game continuation. Uh, let's move on to chapter sixteen. Uh, let's take a minute by ourselves to come up with a full evaluation of the position, what's going on in this position?
Did the sound go?
Uh, sorry, did, did my sound drop out?
Yeah, just at the end.
Oh, my, my apologies. Uh, we're just gonna take a minute to come with a full evaluation of the position, of the position.
This one's a pretty famous one, though.
Uh, if you recognize it, maybe, uh, maybe you do. May, maybe you recognize it if you do. Alright, let's figure out what's going on in this, uh, position. We've done a full evaluation, who is better?
White.
White, why?
Black has literally nothing to do.
So, yeah, uh, White has everything in the world going for him. Uh, Black's king safety is ridiculous. White has eaten up the only file, and these two rooks are ridiculous. Uh, Black has a nice battery here, but the white knight is sort of blunting it. And, uh, this is a very famous game, it is Short Timon. Uh, if that jars anyone's memory, does anyone know what White played in this position?
I just remembered it.
Yep.
F4.
King f4. What's he doing? What's the point? Yeah, king's just gonna show up on h6. Hey! Here's what White, White realizes. Black can't move any of his pieces. It's sort of ridiculous. The rooks can't move, the queen can't go anywhere useful, the bishop is stuck behind the queen. There's nothing that can stop White from going king g5, king h6, queen g7. It literally can't be stopped. Uh, so I think, I think Black played one more move and then he resigned. It can't be stopped. He's just getting mated. So if we look at the original position here, one way we could find this plan is by sort of looking at what piece isn't doing anything. The queen's doing a great job, the rooks are doing a great job, the knight's doing an important job, it's blunting the battery. The king's a little lazy, right? He's not doing much. Uh, so Short found this awesome idea of poking my head on in and mating Black. Cool, cool, cool. Chapter seventeen has the full game continuation, which was two moves. Alright, chapter eighteen, I think, is a, a great, great, uh, game or a set of ideas here. So let's take another minute, uh, and come up with a full evaluation of this position. Alright, there's a ton of imbalances in this position. Uh, someone give me just one imbalance, we'll do one each. Who's got one imbalance for me?
Development.
Development. White is way ahead in development. White's castled, got all these pieces out. Uh, Black is not castled, this guy's still at home. Uh, good, so White has a big lead in development, what else?
Bishop pair.
Yeah, uh, Yeah, uh, here we've got a bishop versus a knight. Uh, or, and we can also call it, white has the bishop pair, black does not. Uh, I heard space, yeah, white has a little bit more space, this, um, this e5 pawn is, is pretty strong, it's eating up some space. What else? I think there's one that sort of goes along with development, because black is underdeveloped, what is he lacking here?
King safety.
King safety, very good, black's king is in the center, it's unsafe. So, we've come up with sort of, uh, an idea of what's going on in the position, all these imbalances. So, uh, take 15 seconds, and then write a move for white in, uh, in the general chat. 15 seconds, then we're gonna write our moves in general chat. Alright, if you have an idea, uh, you can, you can throw it in the channel. I've got c4, I've got bishop g5, do we have any other ideas? Queen d2? So we've, we've latched on to this idea of c4, why, why do we like c4?
Crack open the center while the king's trapped there.
Good. We know that black is behind in development. We know that black's king is stuck in the center. So we as white, we wanna open up the position. I also wanna point out, uh, bishop g5 is, is actually a pretty good idea. Uh, what's your idea behind bishop g5? That was something pretentious, right?
Yeah, so just, uh, pinning the knight to the queen, and then, I mean, if the queen unpins, then you've got bishop f6, uh, hitting the rook, and then, like, uh, black can't castle king side.
Yeah, so, uh-
Then, I don't think it's necessary to do that, cuz you can just play bishop g7.
Mm-hmm. And what happens if white tries bishop f6 in this position, just being really annoying?
Black takes?
Black castles.
Yeah, you can castle. For black, but now black has the excellent pawn center, and-
And also, uh, you can't defend this pawn.
I mean, even playing c4. There's counterplay on this, you don't have to go to g8.
That's true.
You don't need to take back the pawn immediately.
That's true. Black can-
It'll be there.
Uh, would you play knight f5 in this position then?
Probably.
That, that's probably a good move too. Uh, I, I think they're, they're both good moves. Uh, so, yeah, you're, you're sort of helping black by, by filling in all the, the problems with his position. Although I, I guess with the knight on f5, it's, it's hard for the queen to come in on h6. I'm, I'm a little worried about the dark squares here, but I don't think it's a too big a deal. Uh, cool, cool, cool. So that's why bishop g5 is, is not a great idea, but we like c4. C4, we're gonna crack open the position. Alright, now it's black's turn. Uh, what should black do?
Cry.
Cry?
Yeah, cry and then develop.
Cry and develop? Both at the same time? Uh, if we're gonna develop, how are we gonna do that?
Bishop g7?
Aren't we worried about, uh, white taking on d5?
We'll retake with the knight.
Good. We, we would be kinda happy to put our knight on d5, right? That's a nice piece. Knights are good on d5. So black's like, hmm. My king's in the center, I'm not developed, white's trying to open the center. I, I better get my, my game on. I better, I better get going. Uh, so black plays bishop g7. White to move, what are we doing? We played c4, right? What should we do?
C takes d.
C takes d. We had a plan, we're gonna open the position. Okay, I'm gonna open the position. We, we have a, we have a, we have an mm.
Yeah, okay, uh, argument sake, what are we getting out of relieving the tension immediately? Why not leave it with, uh, queen b3 and-
Great question. Um, when we play cd, uh, we have, there's an idea that white has. Uh, so after knight d5, doesn't anyone see what, uh, white's follow-up is gonna be? After cd, knight d5?
Bishop c5 suggested in chat.
Bishop c5, what's your idea? Yeah, so this is what white gains from, uh, from immediately relieving the tension, is that when we pull the knight off of e7, we now can put our bishop here and prevent castling. So we do gain something. We're being annoying, we're, we're posing problems to black.
Aren't we losing to Paulino?
Do you wanna take on e5? You can. You're welcome to.
It's very annoying, depending on what order you retake, but, uh-
I think, I think knight takes e5 feels a little suicidal to me as black. Uh, I, I, I don't like that idea. Like, uh, Arkon, what piece would you take with? Taking with the knight just loses, I think. Cuz if you take with the knight, here, I'll put it on the board. I think this, you're gonna be sad.
Right.
Um, so, you can take with the bishop.
Works out similar, yeah, I see what you mean now.
Um- But then the knight, the knight can come back there. Yeah, but it's still not a position you want to be playing. I mean, yeah, there's, there's dark square weaknesses.
Also, maybe, like, what are you gonna do about bishop b5 here? I don't know. Well, I know, I should probably take it, right?
G7.
Yeah, I, I'm okay, I'm gonna take this.
Ch- take, check on b5, knight goes back, and then you have, um-
Rookie 1, maybe?
Yeah, rookie 1's probably fine, um- Is queen d4 doing anything?
Ooh, that's annoying.
Not as much as you would like. Yeah, and then I have king f7, but-
How, was, king f7 in what, in what position here?
After f6.
And then you can get out of the center with king f7, if you need.
Oh, this feels so shaky.
It's artificial, but like-
So, so let's find a better line here, cuz this is, this is an important test, like, can he take on e5, right?
Yeah.
Um, if he can, then our, our whole plan is, is bogus.
Right, um-
I thi- I feel like taking this bishop is correct. But I'm, I'm open, I'm open to, to suggestions.
I like rookie 1 rather than, uh, queen d4.
Do we wanna throw this check immediately? We can also check with the queen on a4.
Yeah, but what is the queen doing on a4?
Oh, hold on, can I do this?
Hmm.
F6 again?
Yeah.
I guess, it is sort of holding together.
But then, no, then you've got, uh, bishop b5 check.
No, cuz f6 defended the rook as well.
Yeah. B5 check, actually, you don't even have to transpose, you can play king f7.
That's true. So, okay.
Keep the knight on e5.
We'll, we'll throw the check, knight c6, rookie 1. I would say, at the very least, white has full compensation for the pawn. Let's, actually, let's evaluate this position. What are the imbalances in this position?
Extra pawn for black.
Extra pawn for black, he got his pawn, he said, "You're gonna give me a pawn, I want a pawn."
King's still in the center.
Yeah, I'm worried about my king, that's not good. That doesn't seem fun.
Category you'd put it in, but the dark square weakness is around the king, I guess it's pawn structure, but kind of king safety.
Like, king safety, pawn structure, weak squares, like those, those outposts, I guess there's no knights, but, you know, weak squares. Um, development. Uh, we haven't even mentioned this, two bishops versus two knights. It's probably good for the bishops, the position's pretty open. Um, so, it seems to me, if nothing else, white has full compensation for the pawn. Just looking at these imbalances. I feel like white has more. But that's just my personal feeling, uh, it looks like white has at least enough to give the pawn. Agreed?
Agreed, yeah.
So, uh, back to this position. We, uh, we took, and we played bishop c5, stopping castling. So, uh, it's black to move. What's black gonna do?
Play bishop f8.
Why?
Because your dark square bishop is too strong on that diagonal? Because I, if I'm not threatening to take on e5, my bishop doesn't belong on g7.
Yeah, uh, black has some problems to solve, right? Mainly this king. So, black is gonna try and solve the problems by offering to trade these bishops. So, we're back to white. What's white gonna do? So I guess the first question to ask ourselves, oh man, that's weird. So the, the first question to ask ourselves is, uh, should we take this bishop on f8?
I feel like I don't want to as white, but I don't see a better response.
Why, why not?
Because your bishop is better than his.
Hmm. You're also solving black's problems. Like, his king is in the center, and then suddenly, he takes on f8, goes to g7, and he's very safe.
Yeah, the king, the king would be kinda happy to show up on g7, right? So I think this is a, a common thing that happens, I, I find this happens to myself a lot, is I'm like, "Wow, I really don't wanna take on f8." And then I'm like, "Well, guess I have to." And then I take on f8, right, instead of spending any time like trying to find a better move. But that's not what, like, grandmasters do, right? They say, "Man, I don't wanna take on f8, I'm gonna spend some time and try and find an even better move." So, I, I agree, we don't wanna take on f8. But that limits our, our choice of candidate moves, right? So let's find a move where we don't have to take on f8, and we're doing something annoying.
Queen c1?
Queen c1, what's your idea?
If he takes, we recapture, and we're still on that diagonal.
What if he doesn't take?
Then we get to maintain the bishop on c5.
There's an even more nefarious point to queen c1, queen c1's a very good move. What are we gonna do?
Uh, you can, you can go h6 after you trade bishops.
Uh, s- sorry, for black?
Well, if-
Oh, you're gonna play queen h6, yeah, yeah. So what white is threatening to do is go takes, queen h6. And black's king would not be very happy on g8. That would be a sad square for, for black's king. So white has created a threat with this move queen c1. Now, here's where grandmasters really show their class. I'm gonna give us a minute, and I want us to find a really nasty move. Let's take a minute, find a really nasty move for black. Alright, if anyone has an idea, uh, they can start typing it in the general chat. I've got an idea of rook c8, queen a5. Rook c8 again, so I've got two rook c8s, someone tell me what's, what's our idea behind rook c8?
Discoveries?
Discoveries, how so? Give, give me, give me a variation.
If you, if, if it's then, well, you were saying before that the threat was, uh, taking on f8 with the bishop, so you could just do that, as before. And then the queen's out of the way, if you take, but, um, I guess a knight move somewhere, but I didn't- Knight d4. I don't know if this works.
Hmm, what do we threaten with knight d4?
Knight e2.
Knight e2 check. So, uh, sometimes, we gotta use tactics to solve our problems. White has introduced a threat. And there's, the only good way to, to meet it is through tactical means. Here, white goes on with his plan, and if we just take the bishop, white's gonna go queen h6 check, and that's bad. So black throws in this move, discovery. The queen has to move, and it has to defend this bishop. So you know, like, queen d1 or queen d2, it's all the same, we take with check. Now we take the bishop, black's king is safe, this is a totally equal position. Black has solved his problem of development. He's gonna play king g7, the position will be basically equal. Cool example, right? This is a, this is a solid, solid move, rook c8. It shows black's understanding of what white is threatening, and how black needs to find a way to deal with that, or else he's gonna be worse in this game. Hashtag countermove.
Can you, uh, give a line, so instead of the rook line, if you do get in bishop takes f8, and queen h6 check, and then king g8, how, how is that so much worse? Can you show the difference?
Uh, so, can you suggest, uh, another move for black here for me then? Like a worse move?
Oh, a6, something wasteful.
Great.
No, let's, hold on, let's just play rook c8 and pretend like we don't see knight c4.
So we're gonna play king takes? Great, 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 yeah, yeah. Um, so here, I, I have some, some problems as, as, uh, da-da-da, black. First of all, um, my, my h8 rook will never play. Uh, my h8 rook is so, so sad. Uh, I guess, what's black, what's black's idea here, to play, play queen f8 maybe?
Yep.
Um, so on queen f8, I would probably just like drop my queen back or something. Here, I feel like I can just play kind of slowly as white. Maybe something like, uh, rook fd1.
Okay, queen f8.
And I'll, this, this was my idea.
How about then h6? Or even-
Maybe, maybe I shouldn't play queen g5, maybe queen g5 is a poor move.
Queen h4 looks better.
Uh, sure, but, anyway, yeah, so I can just play king g7.
Queen h4, I'm, I'm a little worried about this pawn, actually. Um, maybe queen g5, uh, queen g5, you had h6.
I don't know if that's good, I'm just suggesting it.
No, yeah, it's, it's, it's a natural move, it's worth looking at, like, you wanna, you wanna kick my queen out. So maybe I have to play a little bit more, more critically as white, a little bit more incisively, maybe I can't, oh god. Maybe I can't just, like, sort of laze around with rook moves. Is knight g5 anything? Am I, am I accomplishing anything?
Not on h7.
Well, yes, not on h7, that, that great rook on h8 defending h7.
Yeah, I guess, one thing I wanna point out about this position is, sure, we can say black is playing a rook down with the rook trapped on h8, but, uh,
So I, I have an idea-
Keeping the queen on h6.
I'm gonna play h4. I'm gonna try and use the, my queen on h6.
Still just queen f8?
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
And, I don't know, here I can probably play actively.
With, um, wha- what, what were you thinking? H6?
Queen to b4. Well, just come out, and I'm coming to f4 with the queen.
Coming to f4, hmm, that's an interesting idea. That is interesting.
Yeah, and you're, and you're heading the b2 pawn.
I don't think, I don't think I care about b2.
And especially like, b2, rook a b1, I don't want your rook in on b7, so-
The, the e2 bishop would be hanging there. Uh, if I-
Sure, but you, yeah, alright, fair enough.
Um-
So maybe you insert bishop c4 or something, but eventually you get the tempo back and-
Yeah, yeah, I, I- Yeah, yeah, I, I agree with that. I'm thinking, uh, I wanna play h5, but this is an interesting defense coming to, to f4. Maybe I.
Can we really get away with g3?
I, I was gonna say, maybe I have to play g3.
Hmm.
I feel a little sad about playing g3 though, I didn't want to.
Yeah, and then h6, you don't have space anymore.
I would prob, oh no, I don't have that.
Maybe you have to play queen d2 now.
Yeah, so, uh, something's gone a little wrong here for, for white. Queen h4, I, I like this h4 move. I think this is the sort of the, the right idea. But I don't know.
I accept the other position is better, because you get the rook out, I'm just, there's no, there's no extra pressure, that's my, my point.
I, I agree, I agree that this is not a, a winning position for white. Um. I think.
I.
I think at, at, at best, it would be like, a, a pleasant advantage for white.
That's really interesting, cuz I would, uh, after h4, I would prefer black, I think.
Really?
What would you play determination instead? What would you play instead of h4?
Yeah, well.
I just don't, I don't rip the whole plan with queen h6 very highly. Like even though you're trapping the rook on h6, uh, sorry, trapping the rook on h8, your queen has to stay on h6 to keep the rook trapped, right? So I'm playing without a rook, you're playing without a queen.
So, uh, I have another idea here, what if I play bishop c4?
Bishop c4, okay, um, so you want to take on, so if you take on d5, suddenly you get checks on f6, that's kind of nice, um. Maybe white has a little bit, okay, I, if I just play queen f8 and we go into an endgame where I have the isolated d pawn, I don't know, I think I get enough counterplay against e5 for that to be okay.
I agree with that, I probably wouldn't, uh, wouldn't go into the ending here. In fact, I might, uh, play queen d2 here.
Hmm, and here knight b6, okay, you have the open d file, but rook is coming to d1 and I've, I get to play king g7 and I'm still behind in development, but.
Yeah, I think it's, it's not, it's not amazing for white, I think white has a small plus. Do, do you still feel that black is better here?
Well, this, this would just be equal, I think.
Equal? Yeah, I, I, I agree this is approaching equal. I agree, I agree with that.
Yeah.
I feel like there should be something pretty good for white. I like this bishop c4 move. Queen f8, maybe this is, maybe this is the best, um, the best that, uh, excuse me, white has, just something like this.
Yeah, and you can never push that pawn. Alright, but, uh, black's king is better, it should be in time.
Uh, how are you planning to defend your d pawn right now?
Yeah, play rook d8. But then you take an extra tempo, cuz you've got your king in the way, so can you then double the white rooks? Uh, let's see, so if you play rook d2, king e7, I'm in time with king e6, right? Yeah. Just holding. But then, then you've got, uh, knight g5, check, and if you take the pawn, then you've got the fork on f7.
So what, what are we gonna play, rook, rook d3 here?
Rook, rook d3 or d2?
D2 probably.
I prefer d2, cuz otherwise there's a fork from the knight. Uh, and then, yeah, so king e7, rook ad, uh, yeah, rook ad1, and then, if king e6, knight g5, check. And you can't take the pawn, I guess, uh, yeah, you can't even move away from defending that.
Yes, you have to.
Uh, f7 pawn.
You have to do something like this, and then I.
And then you can take the, and then you can take the d pawn.
I am gonna hang, no, I'm not gonna hang a2 at the end.
Oh, here we go, alright, you guys ready for this?
Can you go king f5?
No, cuz the f7 will hang.
Oh, right.
Is you ready for this?
Yeah, tell me.
I gotta, got a bomb to drop on ya. Alright, so king e7, rook ad1, rather than king e6, why don't we just play rook d7? I will give you d5, but if we trade all of the rooks, your king is too far away and I'll pick up e5.
Rook ad1, rook d7 here? Is, is your line?
Yep. Yep, and the point is, I'm gonna play rook hd8, uh, even if you take.
Right here, you're playing rook hd8.
And we're just gonna trade all of, yep, we're gonna trade all of the rooks and your king is too far away.
Yeah.
Uh, help you hold the e5.
Takes, takes, knight g5?
Hmm, king e7?
Knight takes?
Knight takes? It's, yeah, this is, this should be okay. Knight takes e5. I believe.
Knight g5.
Am I missing something?
It's, it's, it's 5 versus 4, I'd rather avoid.
Yeah, okay, so rather than, um, other than king e7, why don't we just take on e5 immediately? I'll give you f7 for it. Uh, no, sorry, you're still have to take on h7, so.
So.
Rook d7, same line all the way up to knight g5? Oh, uh, yeah, if you.
Knight g5.
If you, if you take e5 straight away, then you have, do you have f6? No, you don't. I was thinking about trapping the, uh, the knight.
And what are you gonna play, king e6?
Knight d3. No, I'll just go knight d3, I'll pick up one of your queenside pawns.
Oh, that's true, but I'll play knight g5.
Uh, okay, f6.
Knight e4?
Right, and then, f5. I don't know, I think black's king here is enough to hold.
Uh, you, you might be right, this might be drawn. I could, I could see this being drawn. Yeah. It's probably drawn. Interesting. That's funny, cuz I just sort of assumed that this position is worse for black. It looks terrible for black. Uh, in my opinion. But, uh, it's hard to prove, it's hard to prove it.
So, let's go back for one second to, uh, one of the earlier chapters, I just wanna kind of draw a parallel that I think is really interesting.
Yeah, tell me.
Uh, so on chapter, wherever the chapter that you had, we had the threat of knight takes d5, uh, with the bishop on b5 hanging.
Uh, yeah, 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 chapter 9.
Here we see like, long term, if white prevents any threats, white keeps the bishop on b5, black keeps the rook on c5. Right? Both of those pieces are out of play, white is essentially playing an exchange up on the rest of the board. Right? Then do you have to have your queen tied down to the defense? Maybe, I, I mean, as, as long as you defend it, so like, after f4, your queen's not necessarily tied down to the defense, right? Okay. So, uh, just kind of drawing, I'm doing the same idea where I'm, I'm isolating some pieces and saying, these pieces are removed from the game. Of the board. Right? And if we do that same thing in this game that we're looking at here, we see, okay, rook on h8 is removed, queen on h6 is removed. You know, as, as long as there's nothing tactical happening on h7 or f7, right? As long as those pieces essentially match each other, black is up a queen for a rook on the rest of the board.
That's why, that's why I was trying to get something that like used my queen on h6, that's why I'm playing like h4, right? Um, cuz I'm, I'm trying to use the fact that my queen is on h6 to like create play. Uh, but unfortunately, it looks like it's, it's just too slow. And that, that when the queen shows up on f8, I, I often sort of have to take it, cuz my queen is a little bit dumb.
Mm-hmm. Um, cure intellectual curiosity and digging into this position a little bit more.
Hmm.
Uh, one of the reasons that I didn't wanna take on d5 immediately was because I couldn't see a continuation that really went anywhere. Um, so now that we've pretty thoroughly examined this bishop c5 idea, and I think we've concluded that like, black is roughly equal in almost every line, as long as he plays correctly, what happens if we maintain the tension?
You want to play?
Can white get anything here?
Queen b3, I think was your idea?
Yeah, I just wanna play queen b3, put a rook on the d file, um. And sure, I mean, black.
Uh, okay, uh, I think I'm gonna castle.
Okay.
Oh crap. I don't have castling enabled for black.
Why is that even an option?
Um.
The king could move and come back.
Give me, give me, give me one second.
Sure.
Uh.
I guess I'm giving away e5, so probably it's not so good, um.
Alright, let's enable castling for black.
Quality plays?
Uh, so chapter 22 is the same chapter with castling enabled. Uh, c4, bishop g7, queen b3, castles.
Hmm. Okay, yeah.
Cuz you, you can't take b7.
Alright, fair enough.
So I think, I, this appears very equal to me, maybe black is even better. Uh, cuz e5 is pretty weak.
Yeah. Yeah, I think you're right, white will have to work hard to hold the edge.
So it appears that i- in the original position, this is almost equality. And I, I'm surprised to see that, to be honest.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I, looking at this original position, I would prefer white, just cuz, you know, the lead in development is, it's a, it's a good amount of development he's up. Um, but, uh, the weakness of this e5 pawn actually turns out to be a big factor in this position. Cool, cool, cool. Are we good with this position? Have we analyzed it to death? Yes, no, maybe so?
Yeah, probably.
Great. Uh, chapter 19 just gives, uh, the line that Silman gives. Uh, which, with the rook c8 idea, uh, the rook c8 tactical idea. Just avoiding any nonsense on, on h6 and all that. Chapter 20 is the last, uh, example that Silman gives in this, in his sort of introductory chapter. And he basically, uh, points out that i- in this chapter, or in, in this position, you can use imbalances, uh, to help even in sharp positions, in very tactical positions. So, uh, let's, let's check out, um, what's going on in this position. Uh, someone give me an imbalance.
King safety.
King safety. Black's king is horribly unsafe, white's king is not amazingly safe either. Uh, no one has any king safety. Great. Uh, what else is going on?
Bishop pair.
Bishop pair, white's got some bishops, we like bishops. Uh, anything else? Maybe, maybe pawn structure, but that's really not the point in this sort of position, right? Uh, if we, if we go back to that sort of other method of evaluation, pawn structure is what we consider last. Uh, and clearly there's more going on in pawn struct, than just pawn structure. So, one thing that Silman talks, uh, a lot about later in the book is, um, sort of thinking about what you, uh, what you want to play and then making it happen. So, what are some moves that we would want to play as white? Even if we can't right now, what are some ideas that would like be really great for white?
d6.
We would love to play d6, just ki- keep this, kick this bishop, uh, into, into overdrive. What's some other stuff that would be great?
Queen on h7.
Queen on h7? I want my queen all the way at h8.
Fair.
I win this knight, no?
You win it on h7 too, but yeah, it's here to me.
Uh, well, queen h8 kicks the, the king off, so I win it immediately, right? I, I, I guess.
Oh, I'm saying with the bishop still there.
Hmm, yeah, uh, but it, it's gonna be hard to get the queen in there with the bishop still on h6, right?
Yep.
Uh, I, I know I told you to make, you know, an, an impossible moves. Uh, so yeah, if we could play queen to h7 immediately, that would be a pretty good move. What else, uh?
Queen e5 would be, uh, I mean, you're still picking it up, I guess, after queen h8, but, uh, queen e5 for black.
Yeah, yeah.
Is not something that I necessarily want to allow.
For sure. Um, what's another queen move that would win the knight? If we could play it.
F6.
Queen f6, right? Uh, so this is another square where if we're allowed to play it, we can win the knight, right? So, these are the moves we wanna play. Oops, there's this. Let's come up with some ideas to make one of these happen.
Alright, so, uh, if I wanna put my queen on h8, I need to move the bishop. If I have moved the bishop, I want the best square for the bishop. Uh, I also wanna fight for control over d6, so it seems like bringing the bishop to f4 is the right square. Um, in order to play bishop f4, I need to play rook to g4, supporting it.
So, let, let's start off just with bishop f4. Wha- tell me why you wanted to play bishop f4 again?
It allows me to play both queen h8 and d6.
So, if I play bishop f4, uh, what happens?
Gets taken.
And then, okay, I, I, I got a move I wanted, right?
I mean.
This is gonna end badly after queen takes after your check.
This is gonna end badly, right? So, bishop f4, it's a cool idea, right? I'm gonna boot this queen. I'm gonna play queen h8 check. Hey, this is working out, but we see bishop f4 doesn't work. We're sad. But I love, uh, what determination did, he didn't say, oh, bishop f4 doesn't work, guess I can't play it. He said, man, I really wanna play bishop f4. How can I make that happen? And what did you come up with determination?
Rook g4.
Rook g4. And he says, okay, I really wanna play bishop f4, I'm gonna make bishop f4 happen. Alright, what's black gonna do about it?
Cry, uh. He probably doesn't allow, wants to allow queen to h8, so maybe king g8 gets out of the pin.
Uh, king g8, okay, I'll, I, I wanted to play bishop f4, right?
Yep. Queen has to move, has to also hold c7, so queen d7.
Okay, you've given me a move I wanted, what move did I wanna play?
d6.
d6! See how this is, it's a, it's a house of cards, right? This is falling apart for black. This bishop sprung open, maybe I can play queen f6. Yes.
Yeah, I would. We can actually change the move order here and make this better, if we take on c7 first. So queen d7 takes c7.
Yeah, yeah, you're totally right. Cuz I traded just.
When I, when I. We can just take immediately on g6 here. After.
Hold on.
So bishop takes c7, queen takes c7, rook takes g6. And the point is d6 will win the.
That's nice, that's dirty. Do I have, do I have a counter blow? No, it doesn't look like it.
I didn't see one, but.
No, I, I don't think, I don't think there is a counter blow. Yeah, that's dirty, that's dirty, right? So, king g8, a very natural move for, uh, black. Uh, that's not working. Let's say, uh, I'm gonna trade queens.
Hmm, we wanted to play queen f6.
We wanted to play queen f6! But, but hold on, I'm hanging my bishop.
I mean, okay, but d6 comes and f7.
Isn't that, isn't that a little problem? Isn't that a little tender, a little tender right there? Little sore spot for black? Uh, so yeah, uh, after rook g4, black is losing. Because we found this idea, we wanna play bishop f4 so that we can get, we can get our d6 in, oh god, I can't move, we can get our queen h8 in. But we can't play bishop f4 right away, we make it work. Don't give up on your ideas, they're good ideas, you gotta make them work, make them, make them, make them, make them work. Any questions on this sharp, sharp position? Rook g4, yeah, yeah. Uh, good. So, um, that clears it up for chapter 1 of Reassess Your Chess. Uh, in this chapter, Silman went over all the imbalances and how to use them as a whole, really. Uh, and in future chapters, we go on to more specific imbalances. Uh, the first of which is the, the bishop versus the knight. What we can do now, uh, I have a study prepared for, uh, for knights, working on knights. Or we can transition into endings. So, uh, I'll take a vote in the general channel. Uh, if you want to go on to knights, type knights, if you wanna go on to endings, type endings. Who's Eric?
E.
Determination, you're Eric, great. Uh, looks like, looks like we have more, uh, more votes for endings. Uh, great. Let's do some endings. Uh, I will say, we are gonna, uh, I'm working endings from, from Silman's endgame book as, as, as well. And the first cha- uh, couple of chapters of Silman's endgame books are quite. And the first cha- uh, couple of chapters of Silman's endgame books are quite basic. But, um, that's important. We gotta know our basic endgames. So, uh, we are gonna be working on some, some very basic endgames, but, uh, we need to know them. You gotta know them.
I changed my vote tonight.
Hmm? You changed your vote tonight? Too bad. You gotta, you gotta do endings at some point. So let me get our endings. Here's a study. Uh, go to chapter one. And, uh, can you guys control the study? Like, can you, can you move stuff?
Uh, I think we do have to click the disconnect button, which looks like the pause symbol.
So yeah, under the study, please ki- click the pause symbol. Uh, this is chapter one. Please win. You are white. Please win. I want everyone to win as white. I'm, I'm winning with you guys, don't worry.
My mate counter just keeps going up.
Uh, it doesn't matter if you made whatever. I won.
Yeah.
Did we, did, have we all won?
Yep.
Archon won.
There we go.
You won? Doverman, did you win?
He said too easy, so.
Oh, too easy. He, he won, great. So, um, I just wanna show a nice technique for this, uh, for this ending. If everyone can, can synchronize back up. Uh, can we see my moves o- over the computer here?
Yep.
Yep. So, uh, what I like to do in a queen and king ending is you keep your queen a knight's move away from the king. And, uh, whenever he moves into a knight's move, you just move your king up. I'm keeping my queen a knight's move away, knight's move away, knight's move away, and when he moves in the corner, of course, I'm not gonna follow him. That would be sad. Uh, I leave my queen on the central file and then I march my king up. Um, this is the easiest thing in the world. If I had one second on my clock, I could mate with king and queen. The reason we go over this is really for like, for blitz, uh, purposes. Uh, you gotta be able to mate with king and queen in like a second. Good. Chapter two, uh, please pause, disconnect, and win.
Bonus points to whoever, uh,
Whoever.
Shortest distance to mate.
Uh, yeah, it's not gonna be me.
Um, I'm at the point where it's telling me in my advantage and not mate in how many moves anymore.
Uh, that's fine. It's just, it's just lazy, lazy calcul- lation, excuse me.
Got it.
Mine's taking a while. I'm fucking bad at this. No, don't go that way, god damn it. I had to make so many waiting moves. Okay, I made it. It took me 22 moves.
19.
Uh.
16.
15, nice.
16, but yeah.
16? That's, that's pretty good. I gave you.
Well, I, the computer kept moving in front of my king.
Uh, I gave you a shitty rook position, uh, in that one, which probably made it, uh, longer. Anyway, great. You can mate king and queen and you can mate king and rook. If you can't, play these more. You must be able to do this. Uh, does everyone know the technique for, for rooks?
Yep.
Uh, so yeah, it's, it's really important. We come up, we, we take the file in front of the king and we just wait. Well, okay, he went backwards. Uh, but we come here. Okay, whatever, the computer's doing some dumb shit, but you have to make waiting moves in order to drive the king back, and I think we all understand that technique, right? We good? Cool.
Yeah.
Chapter three, uh, why is chapter three bad?
Stalemate, gosh golly.
What is stalemate?
This one, uh, the king's not in check and there are no legal moves.
The king is not in check, but he can't move. And why does stalemate suck?
Draw.
Draw.
Cuz it's a draw. You're up a queen and it's a draw. Uh, so even when you're up a queen, just be a little bit careful. Uh, and don't draw the game while you're up a queen, cuz that would be dumb. Uh, chapter four, uh, what's the problem with this position?
Still stalemate.
It's still stalemate. You can have stalemate, uh, with as many pieces on the board as you want. Knight can't move, bishop can't move, pawn can't move, king can't move, it's stalemate. Great. Uh, please do chapters five and six on your own. These are the tests from the beginner chapter. I know, it's, it's very difficult.
Oh, black doesn't move by itself?
No.
There's a comment asking.
There's just a question.
Great, did, did we do them all?
Yep.
Should white play rook c7?
No.
No, why not?
Stalemate.
It's stalemate. Should white play queen takes f6?
Stalemate.
No, it's stalemate. Great, you're all geniuses. Uh, I linked another study. This is Silman's E Player Endgames. So, let's talk about mating material. We saw that king and queen mates. Uh, it's, 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 uh, right above you, Nark, up here. Um, we saw king and queen mates, we saw king and rook mates. Uh, does king and two bishops mate?
Yep.
Yes.
Yes.
Does king bishop knight mate?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, but it sucks. Um, does king and two knights mate?
Yeah, I'm considering they're.
Not against the lone king unless the king helps.
Yeah, so, uh, here's the thing. In, in this position, uh, in chapter one, the knights cannot mate. But what should black play?
King f8.
King f8. If black is lazy and plays king h8, that's a two-knight mate. But you cannot force black into mate. So, uh, two knights is not a mate. You're up two pieces, you cannot win. Black plays king f8 and he's fine. There's no mate with two knights, and that's the worst.
Does the computer force a draw then, or does it see if the king's dumb?
Whoa, what do you mean?
I would bet that it plays on. That is, the game play on, or does it give you a draw due to insufficient material?
Uh, the computer would... You know, I don't know. I don't know, to be honest. No, the computer would play on, uh, cuz if there's a possibility of mate.
Added it, it plays on.
Yeah, if, if, if the, um, if there's a possibility of mate, I think the computer will play on. Uh, and then it'll reach 50 moves and then it'll be a draw. Chapter two, uh, please disconnect from everyone and win. Win is black.
Done.
I'm working on it. I'm working on it. There we go. How many moves? I got 15.
11.
Damn. Anyone beat 11 moves? No?
Woo-hoo!
Alright, chapter three, please win. Also, don't fuck this up.
Tempting.
It told me I made an inaccuracy, what?
Awkward.
I'd like, you either, you either blunder or you're inaccurate in this set, or you're, or you're right in the setting. There's no such thing as an inaccuracy. Nope, nope, nope. Has anyone won this? I'm fucking struggle bussing over here.
I'm struggling so much.
I feel like not making any progress.
There's a GM on, uh,
I saw that.
Purchase league that couldn't win it in blitz. It's not that hard. Keep your king either like directly next to the knight or one square diac- one square, uh, empty diagonal between. Just don't give the knight any checks.
Yeah, but then, now I'm having, I'm just having trouble approaching. I'm just bad, don't worry about me.
Proud of you.
You should be. Can I move here? It's so close.
Moves are your friends?
Uh, I'm on move 20. I've been thinking really hard. Let's go here. That was a terrible move. What am I doing? Go back. Alright, finally. Good lord. I just give up. I can do it.
Yeah, I'm done.
I fi- I'll figure it out when I get over the board. Uh, let's go to chapter four. I just didn't wanna bore you guys. Um.
Finally got it. Oh, who's winning in chapter four?
Who's winning in chapter four exactly? Um, so this is a really important concept. What's going on here?
The kings.
There's, there's kings. What, what, what concept is this?
Uh.
The opposition.
The kings are in opposition. Uh, and who do we say has the opposition?
Whoever isn't to move.
Whoever's not moving. So when the kings are facing off, whoever does not have to move has the opposition, and having the opposition is a good thing. So when we reach this position, we want to not be moving. We want to not have the move. We want to reach this position when we do not have the move. So, uh, this is a very important technique. You must know how to draw this as black. It's black to move, and when white is behind his pawn, this is always a draw. But you have to have a little bit of technique here. What should black play?
King d6.
When you're in front of the pawn, you step directly backwards, and we have the moves here. We'll see why. King e6, check. We step directly backwards, check.
Uh, I think you may be playing local moves still.
Uh, oh god.
Yeah, you are.
My fault. Uh, we see it on chapter five?
Yep.
Great.
Yep.
There we go. Check. Boom, boom. We step back. Check. Here, we'll see why we have to step back. We're gonna take the opposition, and then it's stalemate. So, when you're in front of the pawn and the white king is behind the pawn, you just step directly backwards and it's drawn. You step directly backwards and then you take the opposition. It's white has to move, black has the opposition. Great, that's drawing, uh, a king and pawn when the white king is not in front of his pawn. If the white king is, is out in front, it's a whole different ballgame. Uh, very quickly, chapter six, uh, a rook pawn is always a draw if the black king reaches the corner. Nothing you can do about it. Rook pawn always draws when the black king reaches the corner. Great. Uh, and we see a slight difference, uh, in chapter seven. What's different about chapter seven?
Not a rook pawn.
Not a rook pawn. So, uh, white to move wins by playing g7 and the king has to scoot on over. And that's a win. If we look at chapter six, when we play h7, if the king could go to i7, this would be winning. But there is no i7, so this is a stalemate. Womp. Uh, so, chapter seven is a win, chapter six is a draw. Uh, please answer the questions in chapters eight and nine. These are the questions on class E endings. Alright, should white play king f3?
No.
No, why, why not?
Then he can be forked.
That would be really sad. Uh, white should play king f3 if he wants a draw. White probably doesn't wanna draw. Uh, in the second one, what should black play with his king?
D8.
King d8, we step directly backwards. When we're in front of the pawn, we step directly backwards. Very good. Uh, let me link you class D endings. We're, we're actually gonna get into some more difficult stuff here. We might begin learning. We've got our basics. We're gonna do some learning. So, uh, chapter one. Here we have, uh, an example of more distant opposition. So, as white, we always wanna take the opposition. And the way to do that is to step onto a square that is the same color as black's square. The black king is on black, so in order to take the opposition, we play king d2. This is a really neat trick, uh, for taking the opposition. If you move onto a square that's the same color as your opponent's, uh, king's square, you are taking the opposition. So here.
Clarifying for audience. If the black king were on e7, would I still want to step on d2?
Uh, you're right. Uh, goo- good call. So, yes. Um, if the black king, yes, okay. So, fair point. This only works when you're directly in line with the king or you're a full, like, two files away. So what I mean by that is that this is an opposition square, this is an opposition square, this is an opposition square. If you're in line with the opponent's king or two files left or right. I think, uh, Silman has this idea of, of a box, and the box, uh, needs to have side lengths that are odd. So when I step.
All corners of the box have to be the same color.
All corners of the box have to be the same color, uh, or the side lengths have to be odd. They, they both make sense. If I, if I go here, my side length is seven. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. So I have the opposition. If I were here, it would be seven this way and three this way. I have the opposition. Uh, if I were here, it'd be five and five. I have the opposition. If I'm here, it's four and four. I do not have the opposition. So, determination, thank you for the clarification. You are absolutely right. Uh, the color thing only works if you're online with the king or, uh, on a, a file that's two away from the king. We good on, on, uh, long distance opposition? I'll take the, I'll take silence as a yes. Uh, chapter two, we call this, um, diagonal opposition. Uh, whoever, whoever does not have the move has the diagonal opposition. Remember, when kings are in opposition, if you do not have the move. if you do not have the move, you have the opposition. Uh I think in this case it's white to move. So black has the diagonal opposition. Black's probably not thrilled about having that diagonal opposition because his king's on A eight. But he has the diagonal opposition, so he's got that going for him. Uh alright. Uh, chapter three, again, this is just a long diagonal opposition. The kings are in opposition here. We look at our box. This is seven. This is seven. That means the kings are in opposition. White has to move. Black has the opposition. If the box has odd side lengths, whoever has to move, the opponent has the opposition. Cool. So uh let's go to chapter four. And uh please type in general, what should white play to take the opposition? I see it. King A two. I create a box. This one has length five. This has length seven. It is black to move. Therefore, white has the opposition. Because it is black to move, white must have the opposition. Good. Uh note that uh chapter five shows, once again, rook pawns make you sad. White's king is four squares in front of his pawn. He still can't win. It's a rook pawn. Womp. Great. Chapter six. Okay. Chapter six shows that when the king, when the stronger side's king, when white's king is one square in front of the pawn, whoever has the opposition gets the result they want. So in this case, the kings are clearly in opposition. But it's white to move. That means black has the opposition. So when my when white steps to the side, black takes the opposition. When white steps to the side, black takes the opposition. This is drawn. When the white king is one square in front of the pawn, uh if he has the opposition, he wins. If black has the opposition, black draws. This is with the white king one square in front of the pawn. So uh, chapter seven, please win. Please win as white. Aw, the computer did something dumb.
The trouble is the computer is just trying to maximize distance to mate. Looks like. Realizes it needs to get the king out of the way very quickly.
Great, I got a queen. I win. You don't have to you don't have to mate with the queen. You could. Uh as long as you promote, we've already learned how to mate with the queen. Cool, cool, cool. Did everyone promote?
Yep, yep.
Great. Uh if you had trouble promoting, chapter eight shows uh the winning or the the promoting method. Uh he steps out of the side, you step upward. He steps to the side, you step upward. Uh and then we promote. Yay. Chapter nine. Uh so chapter nine shows that when the king reaches two squares in front of the pawn, it is always winning for white. And the reason is, right now it's white to move. He does not have the opposition. But hey, let's play D three. Now I do have the opposition. And after playing D three, I reach a very similar position to chapter eight where we know how to win this because black has to move out of the way. So uh we can conclude when white is two squares in front of the pawn, uh the ending is won, no matter what. Uh also, side note, if we go to chapter ten and a half, uh skip chapter ten for now. On chapter ten and a half, uh we have this setup pawn on fifth, king on sixth always wins. So there's three things we have to know. If the king is one step in front of the pawn, whoever has the opposition uh gets the result they want, except for pawn on fifth, king on sixth. If the king is two squares in front, it's always a win. So we can put this together in chapter ten. The green circles are what we call the key squares. If the white king reaches the key squares, it's always a win. The blue squares are the opposition squares. When we reach the blue squares, whoever has the opposition should be or should get their desired result. So here it's white to play. What should the outcome of this game be in chapter ten? Is it a draw or is it a win?
Win.
It's a win. Why?
Can take the opposition with king F two and never lose it.
Good. White will play king F two. He has the opposition. And therefore, when we get to these two squares that were blue, white will have the opposition. It'll be winning for white, no matter what black does. We'll play a sample continuation. Oh no, black has to move. I know how to win. So.
There's an interesting continuation here as well.
Uh. Wait.
Uh if you just play uh king E six, so king F two, king E six.
Oh hmm hmm. Yeah, this might be drawn, actually.
So you can't actually keep the opposition now that I think about it?
Yeah, this is a good point. So. What um what white's trying to do, white's trying to keep the opposition. So he plays king F two. But black is a crafty little man. And black says, there's a pawn right here on D two. So if I can put my king here, it's gonna be really hard for white to keep the opposition. So instead of stepping forward like a like the the bad player that I am, determination is is a crafty little man. He steps sideways. And white's like, okay, I'll keep my opposition. Black says, okay, try and keep your opposition. And white cannot. So this is a draw. As soon as white steps up, black says, no. And black is gonna get the draw that he wanted. Good point determination. Uh after that, using this sort of pawn against uh the opponent. So that was chapter ten, chapter eleven. Oh yes, chapter eleven, please win. Please win chapter eleven. The computer didn't even take my B pawn.
Computer just let me outflank and promote the B pawn.
Oh, I came really close to stale mating there.
Oh, it was smart against me. I had to actually do the trick.
So yeah, what's the what's the winning idea here?
Sacrifice the B pawn, run and pick up the other two.
So Silman calls this, Silman's a very interesting person. He calls this fox in the chicken coop. Uh and the reason he calls us this is that this king is gonna run over here and eat these defenseless tasty pawns. And this is why we learn about the value of an outside past pawn in pawn endings. This pawn uh sort of keeps the black king stuck. The black king can't leave the B pawn. So while white, okay, uh if we look at chapter twelve, chapter twelve gives a sample continuation. While while black is sort of stuck um tending to this pawn, white's just gonna run and eat all the other pawns. And this is a clearly winning position for white. So white uses his outside past pawn. He gives it away and then he just runs over. Please win chapter thirteen.
It just keeps letting me promote and I don't know what to do.
Uh. As long as you got the main first idea, that's that's the the thing to take away. So yeah, um. If we look at the starting position, if if you go to chapter fourteen, hopefully you won this position. It's the deep freeze as Silman calls it. What is the deep freeze, Doberman?
I'm tending to a baby here so until my wife gets back, so I haven't been very loud, but um it's when the one pawn holds up the other two.
Yeah, so eh on on chapter fourteen, the starting move for black has to be G five. And now, uh oh, these pawns are a little stuck. They can't go anywhere. That's very sad for them. And we see the same winning method. Black's gonna abandon his outside past pawn and eat the other guys. Please note that on move four, you can bungle this position. Uh on move four, king F three is a draw. Why is this a draw?
H four.
H four. White breaks through. White breaks the deep freeze. So when you have this deep freeze, this one pawn holding two, you always have to be careful and make sure white can't break through with H four. Why is this drawn? If black takes it, we're gonna we're gonna tie in a queening race. And this would be a draw. So instead of king F three, we play king F four. And then when white plays H four, it's not working. So be very, very careful in these deep freezes. The king can't go too far over here or else H four is gonna come and it's gonna be a draw. That was the only thing you had to look out for. Uh great, chapter fifteen. Hey, Archon, I threw this in for you.
Yay.
This is from lightchest forty four to five forty five, Archon versus Quirkt.
Savage.
Um I was still hoping that you had, but I didn't think you did.
Uh so uh this was a long game. Archon had a better ending. Uh and I was playing black here. I clearly have a worse position. And uh Archon just played rook takes F three. And he's won a pawn. Did I have an idea here or did I blunder? Everyone take thirty seconds and figure out what's going on in this ending. Use your king and pawn knowledge. So uh I'm sure Archon probably remembers this game. Uh.
Oh, yes.
Uh I I had calculated that white cannot take on F three because it's a forced draw. Uh who who has a forced draw in them for black here?
Me, pick me.
Okay, determination. Well, what you got?
Alright, so rook takes F three, king takes F three, king H five, king G three, G five.
Good. Why are we playing G five? What's the what's the idea?
After white captures, we have the opposition and the single pawn in games is easily drawn.
Good. So um notice how uh I used I used my really basic knowledge, my basic endgame knowledge here to make a judgment on this position. And I said, okay, I use my very simple knowledge to say if white takes F three, it's a draw. So I'm not worried about white taking on F three because I know that the resulting position is a forced draw. And the reason I know that is because I see this line, king H five, it forces king G three, that's an only move. And then G five, he's gotta take it. And I have the opposition. The king is one square in front of the pawn. It's a forced draw. So I'm okay giving away this pawn. I know that I'm gonna get a drawn king and pawn out of it. So I use the these basic endgame ideas to uh to get uh to get the result I want, which in this case is a draw because I'm 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 much worse at this point. Good. Uh that's using your your basic endgame knowledge in more complicated positions here. Uh chapter sixteen just gives the solution. Uh, chapter seventeen, these are really basic. Uh they show pieces versus pawns. In this case, you sacrifice the piece for the advanced pawn. Uh alright, determination, have a good one. Uh you sack the piece for the advanced pawn. In this case, you play bishop F six. It can never queen. As soon as it does, we take it. It's a draw. So in pieces versus advanced pawns, you gotta sack the piece for the advanced pawn. Really simple. Uh, chapter eighteen. You gotta know the knight tango. Uh you gotta know how to how to defend this uh this past pawn with just a knight. Who can who can tango with the knight for me? Who's got a starting move?
You have the moves displayed.
I know, tell me. What are we starting with?
Knight before check.
Knight before check. And the point is, the king can never drive the knight off the pawn. If we go up, okay, I'm gonna step in the middle. You go over, okay, I'll give you a check. You come up, okay, I'm back in front. You go over, alright, give you a check. And you can't drive the knight off the pawn. So if the knight reaches this sort of dancing configuration, there's nothing that black can do about it. When the knight is allowed to dance in front of the pawn like that, that's a draw. The knight holds the pawn. Chapter nineteen is much tougher. Uh it's the same position, but we've given black the move. And black says, I know what you want. You wanna get that knight dance. I say no. So white gives the check. Black says, okay. Note that uh if black comes up, then uh the knight's gonna come in here and just dance like this. Dance on these squares. And this uh this uh this is not going well for black. So uh the king goes to B four. The knight's gotta step back. If the king goes to C four, that's a repetition. So the king has to step up. Now we go over. If the king goes back, it's a repetition. So C two and I'm dancing. I got my dance. So it's really difficult to stop a knight from uh doing a little knight dance in front of the pawn. And and you gotta know this. You gotta be able to stop this pawn with just a knight and do the little dance. However, uh when does this knight dance not work?
Rook pawn.
Rook pawn. Knights hate rook pawns. They're awful. There are some times when the knight can uh take the rook pawn. In this example, we force the pawn forward and the pawn is stuck. So uh the knight has captured the rook pawn. But with black to move, uh the knight cannot handle the rook pawn. The rook pawn goes up. Uh we're gonna play knight C four. If we try the same idea with uh knight B five, just king B two. And uh you're not getting in. I'm gonna queen. So we're gonna go knight C four. This is the only legal move for black. Okay. Knight A three. King C one, I'm guarding this square. You're I'm gonna promote next move. There's nothing you can do about it. The knight cannot dance because the knight does not have the eye of or I guess in this case the Z file to dance on. The knight cannot prevent the pawn from queening. Knights hate rook pawns. They're awful, 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 awful. Uh alright. Chapter twenty two is rook versus pawns. Uh without looking at the moves on the right, uh just look at the board. Is this uh one or sorry, is this one for black or drawn?
This is one, isn't it?
One for black?
I hope it's drawn because I've drawn this position way too many times.
This is a draw. And Archon, if you look at the moves, you'll you'll see why. The the black king is too far away. Right. In order to draw, in order to win this as black, uh black's king has to play a big part. So we go G six, king D three, come up, king D four, G seven. We gotta stop queening, king, king, king. I'm gonna promote. You can't stop me. Note-
Well, on your first move, what about, um, rook b5? And then the point?
G7?
That's the normal defense, so that's the normal defense, isn't it?
Yeah, so, uh, uh, sorry, who is that, is that Pretentious?
Yeah, I'm back.
Hey, welcome back. So, uh, one important defensive motif to know is that when the king separates itself from the pawn, you cut it with the rook. However, on the fifth rank, it doesn't work.
Yeah, this is what I saw too, and forgot that it had to be the fourth rank, not the fifth.
When you cut with the rook, you gotta cut on the fourth rank, exactly. And the reason is, here I play g7, and black goes, "Uh... Uh-oh." There's an only move for black. Rook b8. But now my king comes. And this is a draw. Because my king's gonna show up on f6, and you gotta take the pawn.
Yep, thanks.
So the rook cut does not work along the fifth rank. However, if you go to chapter 23, I have an example of exactly this. The rook cuts on the fourth rank. And here's the idea. Now if you push the pawn, I'll play rook b6. And the reason this works now is last time, this would be queening, right? Cuz everything was a row advanced. But now g7 does not queen. I'll take the pawn, thank you very much. So, we can conclude, if we cut the king off on the fourth rank, it's a win. But in chapter 22, if we cut along the fifth rank, it's a drawn. It's a drawn, it's drawn. It's a draw, whatever. Um, so we wanna cut along the fourth rank, or else it's gonna be a draw. Cool?
Cool.
24. Uh, this is another, uh, example of a win for white. Why is this a win for white when chapter 22 was drawn?
Because your king's closer.
White's king gets to participate. I push, my king comes in, I can't promote, my rook's holding. King e2, king c2, the king holds the promotion square, and white will win. Another, uh, another technique that's important for winning these positions is taking the opposition so that you can check the opponent in front of the pawn or behind the pawn. Note that we didn't have to use this in any of these scenarios. Uh, but this is an important idea to know in rook versus pawn endings, is taking the opposition so that the check forces the king to a square it didn't wanna go to. Uh, so it's always good to take the opposition, even in rook versus pawn endings. Chapter 24. Uh, oh, uh, chapter 25 is the start of the tests for these, for this, uh, Class D players. So start with chapter 25. Uh, chapter 25 is a play it out. And, uh, proceed from there. Do all the way through chapter 32. Actually, let's do these one at a time, so we're not so all bored and dying. Uh, did everyone win chapter 25?
Yeah, I did.
Great.
I'm about to.
How did we win? What idea did we use?
This is "Fox in the Chicken Coop" again.
Yeah, we abandoned our past pawn, we don't care about the b pawn. We just wanna eat all of black's pawns over on the king's side. Uh, and that's gonna be an easy win. Uh, did we get to chapter 26? Has anyone done that yet? Have we looked at that?
I have.
Uh, chapter 26, is white in any danger?
No.
Why not?
Because the knight's gonna cover a2.
Yeah, the knight's gonna get in front of, uh, the pawn. Uh, so, uh, white's gonna be good. Did anyone notice anything else about chapter 26? White is winning. Very good, Nork. White is winning.
Oh, nice.
Uh, Nork, what's the win? Show me the win. We're not sure on the win? Does anyone have the win for me in chapter 26?
Yeah, I know it if he doesn't wanna do it.
King c2? What's black's move? Only move, king a1? White's move? Yeah, knight c1. This is the key move. You deny the king the a2 square. The king can't move. Black has to play a2. And then it's a smothered mate. So this is a cool motif to know. If you can trap the king, uh, on the a-file behind his pawn, uh, you can mate with a lone knight. Sometimes, not always. In this case, it works out. We deny the king the a2 square, and that's mating. So is white in any danger? No, white's winning, white's mating. Hey there! And this is an example of being able to mate with just a knight. It's a rare case, but it can happen. Uh, chapter 27, it's white to play. Is he winning?
No.
No.
No, no, why not?
Because black has the opposition.
Black has the opposition, white's king is one square in front of the pawn. So, uh, black is gonna draw, black has the opposition. Uh, chapter 29? I don't know where chapter 28 went, it disappeared.
It became 10 and 1/2.
Oh yeah, that's what I did, it was 10 and 1/2, you're totally right. Um, here, chapter 29, it's white to play, is white winning?
Yes.
Why?
Forced the opposition.
Yeah, when the king's two squares in front of the pawn, it's always a win. Always, always, always a win. Well, except for rook pawns, but everyone hates rook pawns. Uh, so here, king has two squares in front of the pawn. B3, white wins. Uh, chapter 30, it's black to move, is white winning?
Yes.
Why?
Looks like it.
You can, uh, force the king up with the pawn, and then it's the "fox in the chicken coop" idea.
Yeah, I don't care about this a pawn. Black's gonna tape the opposition, I don't care. I'm just gonna run and eat on f5. And black has to come eat this. And that's totally winning for white. So again, it's this outside past pawn, right? Black has to deal with this, white's gonna come eat f5. Clearly winning for white. Uh, should be no problems. Uh, chapter 31, is the king and pawn after rook f4 drawn? Let's take, uh, 30 seconds and evaluate if the king and pawn after rook f4 is drawn. So, uh, please type in the channel, uh, "Draw or win for black?" After rook f4. One draw, one win? One draw, one win? This is a really nasty one. Uh, this is a win for black. If you play rook f4, it's a blunder.
Because rook takes isn't forced.
Because black doesn't have to play rook takes f4. In fact, black probably shouldn't. What is black gonna play?
King g5.
King g5, ooh! Isn't that a bummer? Oof! Yeah, when you play something like rook f4, you gotta calculate, or you gotta realize, black can play whatever he wants. That's not a forcing move. Black can do whatever he wants here. I mean, black could play king h5 if he wanted, it would be a dumb move, he could play it though. So, king g5. And now, all of a sudden, white has to take on f5. That's his only move, his rook is hanging. And what's the evaluation of this king and pawn here?
That's a win for black.
It's a win for black. Black has the opposition, white has to move out of the way. And we know that this is a win for black. And a tricky little problem. Um, so yeah, after rook f4, uh, you've lost the game. And honestly, I'm gonna be real. This is a mistake I could see myself making in the game. Making in a real over-the-board game. Cuz king g5 is a sort of move that's pretty easy to miss. Um, so that's why studying the ending is important. Especially because if you know anything about rook endings, it's so obvious that this position is a draw with the rooks on the board. Uh, so I think it's much safer, just keep the rooks on the board. It's an easy, easy draw with the rooks on the board. Uh, alright, chapter 32. Is white lost? Take about a minute with this position, cuz I think this is the most complex, uh, position we've had. So take a minute and decide if white is lost. Alright, let's see it in the chat. Uh, type, uh, "draw or loss." Draw or loss?
It depends who's playing.
Sorry, it's white to move.
No, 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 no.
Oh, it depends who the players are?
Yeah.
That's always true. I've got one draw, one loss. Anyone else have an opinion? Lost? So, uh, Archon, you told me draw.
It's a draw, and it's a cool one.
How are you gonna draw?
Alright, this one, I've seen this one, so it's kind of a mind-blow position. The trick is, the king takes on f2, the knight is gonna cover the g pawn, and the king is going all the way over to deal with the a pawn.
Yeah, here's the thing about this position. Knights, uh, knights hate a pawns. So, uh, the knight's gotta cover the g pawn, especially cuz the king can't really. What's the first move? The first move is forced.
Yeah, king takes.
King takes, what's black gonna play?
Takes.
Takes. And now, this king cannot cover the g pawn. So what's the king gonna do?
He's heading over e1 or e3, either one works the same.
Yeah, you realize, the king cannot cover the g pawn. That means the knight's gotta cover the g pawn. That means the king's gotta get the a pawn. So, you know, king e1. Uh, and it's totally drawn. Totally, totally drawn. Uh, you know, if black tries g3, okay. King d2. G2. Knight e2. It's a draw. There's nothing black can do. And if, uh, if black tries to come around with his king, we know this pattern, it's the knight dance, right? Um, and the knight gets to dance around the g pawn. Oh, actually, I walked into a fork, didn't I? Yeah, I walked into a fork.
Yeah, that works too.
Uh, but either way. Um, yeah, this is drawn. It's a cool pattern. Uh, and it comes from realizing that, okay, my king does a terrible job guarding the g pawn. The knight's gotta come over. That means the king's gotta go guard the a pawn. And it's drawn. Alright guys, that was all of, uh, class, uh, endgames for D players. Uh, note that D players, uh, go all the way up. I believe D players under the UFCF is 1200 to 1400 USCF? Am I right about that? Does anyone know? No?
Oh, it's, yes, that's right.
D players should be 1200 to 1400. Um, so, uh, A players, uh, I mean, we'll get there. We'll get there eventually. Uh, but, uh, we gotta go through C and B first. We gotta build our fundamentals. Um, so, yeah, that was, uh, that was stuff through 1400 players. Uh, honestly, if you can do this well, you can, like, your endgames are solid up through 1400. People are so bad at endings. I was talking with this, uh, I was talking about this with, like, Pretentious earlier. Um, sometimes I play like masters over the board who just like fuck up their endings so bad. Um, you'd be surprised just how bad you can be at endings while being a fairly high-rated player. So, uh, studying the endgame gives you a big advantage over your contemporaries, in my opinion, I think it's super valuable. That's all I had from the ending book. Um, if people want to stick around, we can do some more reassess, we can do knights from reassess. Or we can call it a day, we have been going for two and a half hours, which has been quite some time. Uh, so let me-